You are watching Access LaPorte County Channel 97. Coming up next is the April 18th meeting of the Trail Creek Town Council. You can find more information for this meeting at www accesseslaporte county.org.
Can everyone stand to join us in the second line? I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody. And welcome to our April 8th meeting. Start off the meeting with the approval of the minutes from the March meeting. Do we have any corrections or changes?
I didn't see anything.
I did have one correction for Ken Cross.
I was going to say, I think Ken Cross may always never pass, but thank you. Thank you for that.
You're very welcome.
Any other changes or corrections?
I don't see anything.
Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve the minutes from the March meeting?
I move to approve the minutes from the March 21st, 2023 meeting.
And the second one? Thank you all in favor.
Aye.
Thank you. Hearing none, opposed, motion passes. Let's move on to approval of the fund report. Does Jocelyn, anything that stands out there?
Yes. So you know what it is. Yes, they're good. The CCD fund, that is pointing really, really tight. We have not received our push in some of our property taxes. We'll receive it in June.
Okay.
However, this fund, we ended up spending a little bit more than we thought last year because the cop is June when we do our budget.
Right.
So those are the financial reports that they go by. And then we ended up buying the second police vehicle and the updating of that vehicle. So we are running really, really tight.
Okay.
So there was a $27,000 reduction.
Okay.
I did not take yay from Steve Scapolatle, although right now I had to take it from Park.
Okay.
And also my equipment for my town hall.
Okay.
He only has $10,000 for the rest of the year's spend. Please don't go over that in the CCD in your scapolatle fund. That's where all your ammo comes from and your car payments. Now, we do, we are paying off the $2019 direct go. Last year will be the last payment.
Okay.
But we have to get through next year with the CCD fund. So this is not a fund that we're going to want to push everything into during our budgeting time this year.
So that's why I'm running.
So that's why it's negative.
Balance.
Right. But it will, it will refocus itself. I anticipate by the end of the year, we'll only have $5,000 in there. At least we'll be in the positive.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you. I'm glad you explained that because I know that somebody up here would have asked.
Yeah.
You know we all would. Any other questions or comments on the fund report? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve the fund report?
I'll make a motion to approve the fund report as presented.
And a second?
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Hearing none, opposed, motion passes. Moving on to payment of the bills. Jocelyn, you said you're looking into other health insurance, right?
I can look into the medical trust.
If you would please.
And actually, that's a good point because I do need to ask council since we are pursuing that company. And what med trust is, is it's all of the municipalities in Indiana have an opportunity to jump in on this, which then the more people you have drives down the premium. So we all know that. So this will be a good opportunity for us. However, in order to get our base rate from them, I need to have employees fill out a short single form that would include personal information. That's the only way we're going to be able to get a snapshot of what our rate would be. And I guess we need counsel for that approval to do so.
I don't think we need to approve that. That's pretty standard for any, any health insurance checks.
I just don't want people to feel like, oh, something.
You know, if it's, if it's for health insurance, that's a pretty standard form.
Right.
Okay. We're going to have a, go ahead and move forward with that.
Yep.
Because as you can see, in case you did notice, Jenny, we did have a $23,000 bill this year.
That's why I just asked.
For this particular month because we had two employees jump on.
Right.
And it was retro to the time that they started.
Okay.
Not pennies. Penny, we received insurance in January 1st. Our second employee got insurance in March. This is.
So this goes all the way back to June?
It's already back.
Okay.
Yes.
Wow.
So our bill moving forward, instead of the 8100 a month, will be 13,000 and some change.
Wow.
So yeah, insurance costs are expensive.
What's the new company we're looking at?
It's called Medical Trust. It's through accelerated Indiana communities. And what they are, what they become is sort of a broker to find the best deal. And then all of the Indiana municipal employees go into that pool, which then drives down the premium.
Good.
And there are, there are many communities getting on board with this med trust.
Sure. More of that, yeah.
It'll be interesting to see what our rates would be.
Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve the fund or the payment of bills?
I'll make a motion, pay the bills.
And a second?
Pledge of allegiance. I'll second.
Give it to Warren this time. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And so, motion passes. Moving on, it looks like we do have some correspondence this month.
We do. Do you have one here?
I also have one, but I should go first.
I have keep your resignation letter. I have not opened it. Did you?
I was aware that that was coming, but boom.
Yeah. Did you want to read it alone?
Um.
I have not opened it.
We can read that when it comes to MS4.
Okay. And then I do have a letter that was mailed to the town hall on April 8th. And bear with me, all written in caps.
Okay.
Are we ready?
Yes.
"At one time, Trail Creek was a clean, upscale place to live. Why are people allowed to have junk lining up on their property that can be seen from the street? Why is our town being allowed to become totally rundown? Violation notices should be sent or delivered," my apologies. "Violation notices should be delivered to residents where junk has been improperly set out, where it can be seen from the street. Perhaps some of the dedicated employees could help or get some volunteers if the resident is old or unable to get the junk to the street. Junk that is shoved against homes and garages can be a fire hazard. This is wrong. Why are codes not enforced? Isn't it the job of the so-called town council members to drive around and deal with the disgrace the town is becoming? Get the junk and trash removed from sight. Property values are being destroyed because people in charge do nothing to clean our town up. Take pride in our town. Do your job and enforce what is expected of the town. Dedicate, dedicate council members and street commissioner and town marshal. Get off your chair, get off your phone, drive around and solve the problems. Drive down every street. On Walnuts, there's what's, what used to be a cute little brick house with junk leaning against it. Another one on Walnuts with red chairs and junk right in the front yard. On Johnson Road, part of the living room of Cliner has been laying in the yard for probably six months. Also, on Johnson Road, a house has junk leaning against the house. An old rusty truck and junk boat, all clearly seen from the street. A poll called Codes, uphold codes and do your job. If I can see how our town is deteriorating in the past five years just driving to work and seeing junk in many yards, why is the town council, why is it that the town council doesn't see it? We deserve better. Enforce codes, clean this town up, it's spring cleanup. So take care of our town now. So many people try very hard to maintain their property, but we have many that do not, and that is unfair and wrong. It is your job to fix it."
Is there a signature or return address?
No signature, just entitled "Spring Cleanup."
What was the date on that?
I received it in the mail on 4/8. This is not dated.
Okay. Well, we'll just thank that person for their opinion and it would be nice if they would identify themselves or contact one of us directly rather than write it in general.
Or come to a meeting and actually have addresses of these places that they're concerned about.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Or, or contact one of us directly, right? Our phone numbers are all out there. It's not, it's not hidden anywhere, so. Okay. Anything more that you have?
I did write on the agenda, the name of a resident. This was more of a conversation, but she wanted to get the, a townwide garage sale going, and I don't know how y'all feel about that, or even if that's something that can be done. If it can be done, she wants her phone number put out there. Her name is Connie Anderson.
Okay.
And she lives at 504 Pine.
And it sounds like she would.
She would spearhead it.
Where's Pine? Is it Pine Tree, maybe?
Right.
Must be Pine Tree.
Okay.
Connie Anderson.
Okay. We'll contact her and find out what her ideas are.
Yeah.
I don't think we can act on it this month, but I think that we, we can discuss it. Does anyone have any proposition to it?
Marshall, what's your take on that? I mean, you know, you know, you make sure they're clear. Right. It's going to be overwhelming traffic out in Leeville Town.
Green does something like that, if a community wants to get together, have a garage sale on the same day, like the marshal's.
I'm all for it. I actually thought about bringing that up myself, something about doing that. But I did not know how that would affect, you know, the biggest concern is traffic because you get, there's literally no way to keep it from happening. By the time you jump, you jump from this house to that one, somebody else fills up it. Because if it's advertised, you're, you're going to have a lot of people, a lot.
What, what's the date on the St. Stan's run?
The first weekend in June.
Or first Saturday.
Okay. So we wouldn't be able to do it that weekend, but maybe there could be another date over the spring or summertime if that happened.
She did not indicate dates. I think right now she's just trying to get the ball moving by introducing it to y'all. And then if anybody's interested, if they can contact her, she would work with the town. I did explain to her about the traffic and, and the garage sale permits.
I think that's, I think it's a great idea.
Because that would give us a list.
Right.
And then that list would go to Steve so that he was, or if that's helpful. So you're aware.
Permits, I mean.
Right.
Attention to that.
Yeah, I mean, everyone would still have to have a permit. That wouldn't, that wouldn't go away.
Okay.
But I think it's a great idea.
Okay. Well, then I can call her and have her work with her.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Then we can announce.
The only time that we can't do it is the weekend with the St. Stan's run or otherwise.
Okay.
Okay. Our only other correspondence that we have is an email that I received from Barb, and I'm probably going to butcher this last name, Stadola. And Barb said she would be at the meeting tonight, and I'm assuming this is, this is Barb right here. Hi, how are you? She wanted to inquire about the progress being made on the repair to her barns on Johnson Road, which was damaged by our leaf truck last leaf season in the fall. The barn that she has on her property is a historically significant piece of, or structure. It's the oldest structure in the town of Trail Creek, built in 1880 by the Risky family, one of the earliest settlers to this area. So do we have any update on the progress to that repair?
We do. There was a report done. There were several pictures made. There was a claim made with our insurance company. There was a letter of recommendation by our building commissioner as well. Ms. Stadola and I spoke. The insurance company did agree to a settlement with you. Did you not receive the settlement?
Were you speaking to me?
Yes. Did you not receive the settlement from the insurance company?
I did receive a check from the insurance company.
That's, then that's, that's the settlement?
No.
Sorry, you can't hear me?
I'm sorry, you have a very soft voice.
So, so what she's saying, Mrs. Stadola, is that if you received the check from the insurance company, that is the settlement? And then the repairs would be up to you?
I don't know. I don't know what you mean by the settlement.
They're, so that's the end of the claim. That's their way of resolving the claim, and they're at that point saying that you can go ahead and get the repairs done you need, and that that check should cover the repairs.
I'm still not sure what you're trying to tell me.
Remember the estimate you submitted, submitted to me?
Yes.
I submitted that to the insurance company. They sent it through their underwriters and had people look at the amount, the dollar amount to view that.
And I.
Fair market value, correct?
Correct.
Then they decided that they were going to settle with you by producing a check. We spoke about that.
I don't know. I still don't know what you mean by settle. I mean, like, I received a check.
How about she posted?
Can I, can we discuss this after the meeting, or which, or our town marshal has offered that he would, he would be happy to explain it to you?
Yes.
That way, that way maybe you can ask all the questions you have, but the, the insurance company says the claim is closed and resolved on their end.
The insurance company sent me the check. That is correct.
Right.
Yes.
So after that, what they believe is that you should take that money and apply it towards repair of the barn, but that repair is now your responsibility. That they've sent you the money and they're going to let you go ahead and get that repair done.
I hear what you're saying.
So that should, that should finish it. Now it's up to you to hire the contractor to get the repair finished.
Do you want to discuss this now, or do you want me to wait until later in the meeting?
We can, we can wait until after the meeting, or if you'd like, our town marshal has, has offered to discuss it with you as well.
I would like my remarks to be a part of the meeting.
Okay.
So should we do that now or public comment?
We can, we, we're already going through it, so. So please.
Do you want me to talk about it?
Sure.
Sure.
Okay, let me get my notes here. Hi, from your interaction here, I assume that you all know who I am?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Mrs. Stadola.
That's what I do.
Yes.
At the corner of Johnson Road and Michigan Boulevard, and the fact that it is a historic property, that the barn was damaged over the winter, and I am now trying to repair it. And I am in negotiations to attempt to get the barn back into the condition that it was prior to the accident.
Okay.
I wasn't sure how much you all knew about this incident, but I thought for sure you would all want to know about the incident since the barn is very likely the oldest structure in the town of Trail Creek. And so it is of greater significance than just a garage. And it is of very great, very special interest to me since I have lived there for 37 years. And I am hoping that by bringing it to your attention, I mean, to the attention officially of all the town officials, that I, that you will have an interest in the progress. It's kind of a unique situation, and I am, I am hoping for some, for some supportiveness from the town officials in addition to the cash that I have received. Do you have any questions for me about the progress of?
Well, what kind of support are you looking for from the council? I guess that's.
You know, I have, of course, talked to Jocelyn.
Okay.
And to Steve Thomas. I had a little trouble reaching Steve. I did not realize that he was on vacation and was in an area where he did not, his phone was not, he didn't have, was in, within range to see him call. So, but he did get back to me, and I told him that I was hoping that he would be at the board meeting tonight. I just, I feel that I need more communication, particularly between the building commissioner and the contractor.
Okay.
Because I have tried, I tried to get a local contractor to do this repair work, and nobody was interested. So I finally managed to find a person who specializes in doing historic barns, and he is in a small town of Geneva, Indiana, which is a little way south of Fort Wayne.
Okay.
And I am now in a position to go towards Fort Wayne to see what kind of work he has done previously. And Steve mentioned that he is not familiar with this person, which, you know, it's not as if I were able to get comparative bids. I am lucky to have found one person who specializes in this type of construction. I found him through Indiana landmarks and some of my contacts with historic preservationists. So I feel it's a kind of a, a unique situation that I need, I need, that's the kind of support I need. I would like, what I would like specifically is for the building commissioner or some person that you would designate from the board to communicate with my contractor, whose name is Ruben Schwartz, and Jocelyn has a copy of his estimate, prior to the construction starting. And I think that may be a little bit unusual, but since he's 120 miles away, I hate to think of him hauling a truckload of material over here and then to discover that, no, that isn't going to work. So, you know, I would be more comfortable if there were some ongoing communication.
Has, has this contractor been to your site or to your home?
I'm sorry, I didn't.
Has he been to your home to look at the barn already?
Uh, Ruben.
Your contractor?
Yes, he did. He came to the garage. His estimate is very short. I mean, I don't know if that's typical. You would know better.
More experienced.
Actually, the insurance company, they're the ones that would know the best, and that's the number they settled on.
I see.
So, yeah. I don't have anything to do with it.
You know, I, when I wrote or emailed Ruben, I included phone numbers. I told him that he might hear from the town clerk or the building commissioner or the insurance company. And so I gave him all those numbers, which would be, you know, unknown numbers to him. And then when I got back to him, I asked him if he had heard from anybody, and he said, no, he, he had not. And that was surprising to me that the insurance company would go ahead and issue the check without, you know, having, but, but like I say, this is a new situation for me.
Okay.
As well as for the, I mean, Steve and Jocelyn, both of them have been very kind, but I mean, it's a new, how many barns do you have and how they're 140 years old?
Probably just the one. There may be, you know, I know there's another outbuilding in the home that's behind or next to you, but I don't know if it's quite as old as yours. So I guess the, I'm not sure that any of us would be able to offer that kind of support to you from the council, but certainly we can have Mr. Thomas contact you when he gets back into town, and maybe that would help.
Certainly would.
I don't know how much he can, he can do beyond what Ruben will need to do. And if Ruben has already been to your home, he should know what types of materials to bring with him when he comes to make that repair.
Well, I mean, we're talking about a type, types of materials, I'm guessing, that are not currently being made in the under yards. He's talking, you know, I mean, would be, both of the main beams were damaged beyond repair. This was a very severe blow to the barn, so he's having to replace them. And I mean, I, I certainly don't know how to judge whether the beam is satisfactory in size or shape or, you know, whatever.
Right.
And, and I know, you know, that when Steve gets back, having been on vacation, he's going to be very busy for the first week or two, and I, any help that he can give of that, so it would be very much appreciated.
Okay. Well, Jocelyn has your phone number, and Steve also has your phone number, correct?
Okay.
So we'll have him get in touch with you when he gets back.
Okay.
And then the two of you can discuss a little bit further.
Okay.
Okay? All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, moving on to reports. We have a resignation letter from Kate for our first part of the MS4 report. I almost feel like I need to have John Doyle's fancy letter opener for this one. It's not quite the same. Dear council members, it has been an honor and privilege to serve as your MS4 representative for 18 years and to carry on the family tradition of public service to the town of Trail Creek. But I regretfully submit my resignation effective April 14th, 2023. I do regret that I was unable to resolve the issues regarding the changes forced upon the town, but I do feel confident that my replacement will be up to the challenge. Thank you for the opportunity to be of service. Kathleen Doyle. So.
Is that a replacement?
That is official. There is not an official replacement yet. However, Chris and I have a meeting, a teleconference set up with Shem Khalil tomorrow at 2:00, so we'll be discussing that further on how to move forward with MS4. So that's, that's the whole MS4 report. I'm sorry, who's? Shem, Shem Khalil. I'll spell his name for you later.
Yeah.
Okay. Moving on, our attorney was not able to make it this evening, but he did contact me with his report. He said that a final warning was issued to Evergreen Plaza prior to the recommendation of enforcement for violations that he, they have going on. Steve was kind enough to send photos. So what I did is I printed off the emails, and I've got those for you for the record, Jocelyn, so you can have those. That way all the violations are documented.
What does that mean that we issued a final warning?
So he issued an email that he sent to the property manager at Evergreen Plaza, saying that everything needed to be brought into compliance and cleaned up behind Evergreen Plaza, and all of the code enforcement violations they have going on there right now need to be brought into compliance.
All of Evergreen Plaza?
Probably.
Frosty Boy down?
From Frosty Boy down, because the rest of that is, is a different property manager.
Okay. Got you.
Frosty Boy.
Frosty Boy.
Down.
West.
Towards the west. Okay. Cosmo Prop, this is for the stretch.
West.
Up or down? Okay. Got you.
So that, that should all be, yeah. If you're looking at it to the left. So that was his first, first part of his report. The second part was that he recommends that the council issue citations to JT Sewers regarding the wellness row of issues that has not have been issued to date. The out of pocket for the town for that would be somewhere between $100 and $120 the most, and that would give us the ability to possibly collect our expenses that we have already put out of pocket, and would give us the ability to fine him for the damage that he's done to the town. And this would also authorize our attorney and our, well, at the end of the day, we need to authorize. at the end of the day, we need to authorize our attorney and our building inspectors to look into any violations that have been committed and issue the appropriate citations. So I think Chris would be looking for that motion too, for the authorization to look into the violations.
I move to authorize Chris Willoughby to look into.
Violations committed by JT Sewers.
By the violations that were committed by JT Sewers on Wellness Road.
And to issue the appropriate citations for such violations.
And to issue the appropriate citations.
Thank you. So motion made on the table.
So, can we also consider stopping him from working in the town?
Well, that would come next. After the citations, yes.
That's considered.
Yeah, because he actually completed this work without having registered with the town to begin with, there was already a violation there. So all of this would allow our attorney and our building inspector to look into all of the violations.
He already finished his job?
In total? No.
Oh, okay.
The work was not completed. No, the work was not completed. There was a damage repair.
He's doing other jobs as well and make sure he stops.
In the town?
I saw him two months ago. He was working at it.
He's not registered? Please feel free to.
Enterprise.
Please feel free to tell him to stop work.
Yeah, good.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that. But it will be a more official citation. So we've got a motion and a second. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, do we have all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the motion passes. If you can, this time with questions, please. Thank you.
Question.
And those were the only two portions of Chris's report that he had. So moving on to our town engineer, who has good news for us tonight.
Yes, last Friday, the awards for community crossing grants were presented. And the town of Trail Creek received to go for road improvements. That means the town would have to put up $80,573 in change to gain all of that grant money. Of course, you can spend more too, but that's the maximum that they're going to give to you.
Okay.
So that's all, all really great news. The, the next step is there's going to be an agreement sent probably to Jocelyn. If she hasn't already received it, it should be coming soon. There'll be, there'll be an agreement for the grant that will have to take place before anything moves forward. So that needs to be done as soon as you can.
Yes.
The step after that, of course, will be presenting or preparing plans of work that's got to be done, make big documents, bid it out, and award a contractor to do the actual work. So that's where we are right now with all of that. So it was, it was a good Friday. Yes.
It was a great Friday.
Yes. That's two of them in a row. The only other thing that I have, if you want to discuss this, the only other thing I have, Jocelyn sent us an email from a lady who lives at 1901 Cool Spring complaining about some flooding. She lives directly south of Risky that comes in from the north. And on her west side is an apartment complex. And there was been some flooding there between the two properties. And she attended, they brought a work team in from Michigan City yesterday. And they're going to pass that along to the sanitary district to see how much of this is their problem to fix and how much might be the ton of trouble in Trail Creek's. We saw some debris clogging a pipe at a head wall, you know, sticks and leaves and other detrius materials that just build up there that probably helped cause the flooding in that neighborhood. I don't know how long the flooding lasts when it does flood, but obviously, we don't want it to flood. If we can just remove the materials, we'll, we'll have the sanitary district do it because it's on their side of the.
That was going to be my question.
Yeah. The ditch that drains the parking lot for the apartment complex runs right down the property line, which is the town's boundaries for Michigan City and Trail Creek. So iffy thing.
Is that on the north or the south side of Cool Spring? Okay.
South side.
Right at, right at like Risky?
Right at Risky.
Okay.
Yeah.
The apartment, the apartment complex.
Doty.
Right next to it, correct. And this has been going on for years. Doty used to pile all their snow into piles on there. And that's what, you know, during the winter months and the spring. And I know John Doyle has dealt with it numerous times. I just don't know what the outcome.
That's what causes the debris to build up probably? And so they need to clean that out every spring?
And allegedly, the apartment complex, and this is probably two years ago, was supposed to stop piled with snow in that ditch.
That's something I didn't know. Thank you for letting me know.
So where does the water flow?
It, well, between the apartment complex and her house goes north. Somewhere, heads west to a ditch somewhere between White Oak and Risky.
Yeah.
There's an outlet, yeah. In those woods. So I, how it gets there, I don't know. I was asking Jocelyn about public records and if they had anything.
Oh, we had any sewer maps.
That we have.
Because there was a widening of Cool Spring 15, 20 years ago. And during that widening, they added some storm sewers and, and rigs and stuff. And I was hoping we'd be able to find copies of that so we know what's underground there and see where the plug is happening.
And I explained again, we do have a ton of maps back there prior to my term. But we just don't have the necessary storage space for them. We just don't. They're just kind of thrown back there and they're not labeled. I pulled, I attempted to pull some out at some point, but even the little map thing I bought for the town doesn't even begin to start with the organization and how many maps are over there.
Maybe start scanning them. That'll be expensive.
Maybe, but it'll be. Possibly. Possibly. We can look into that. It's an idea.
It is.
So it's left that, right now, the city is looking into their solution or?
Yeah, they were going to bring it up to the sanitary district, according to Ms. Pharoah, who lives there at 1901 Cool Spring. She said that the sanitary district is always in the past taking care of it. So the board of works is bringing it to the sanitary district's attention to see what else they can do.
Okay. And then will they follow up with you or will she follow up with you?
I, I will follow up with her.
Okay, thank you. I was going to ask which way that was going, but.
Well, they'll have to report to the board. We'll find out. Hopefully, we'll find out before they report to the board and, because that's another month away.
Right.
So.
Okay, well, if you could just keep us up to date, that would be fantastic.
We shall try.
As far as the community crossings grant, I believe that we can go ahead and authorize you to start bids because we should receive that paperwork very soon. So in the interest of time, if we can have a motion to authorize Hassan Associates to move ahead with the bidding process and the planning process for, for the projects as planned for the community crossings grant.
Right, the locations have already been identified at this point in the application for the grant. So we know where, what street's from where to where. There are seven of those streets. So we could get started on with your permission.
So if we could have a motion to authorize Hassan Associates to move forward with bids and planning for the.
Make a motion for Hassan Associates to move forward.
Thank you, with the bidding and planning process for the community crossings grant.
I'll second that.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Hearing none or opposed, motion passes. And we can get started on some street repairs for this year.
I'll let the boys know.
Thank you. I think, I think everyone here will be happy to get some progress made in the town. Okay, let's see if I have any updates from the park department. Sharon, have you heard anything?
No, I haven't.
I also have not, and I contacted, well, I messaged Mr. Ganshaw again today and had no response. At this point, I think I will contact all the park board members and we'll schedule that within the next two weeks. We'll have a meeting.
Yeah, let me know if I can attend that.
I will. I will call you directly. So, so look at that schedule, please.
And I think the reason why we're pushing for them to meet, they haven't met since before.
And we are now out of compliance with that.
Right, and the biggest issue is that Wally Prince is making an appearance in my office a lot lately. And I think that his main concern is that sign.
So the sign, the sign that was removed was not only incorrect, but it was also quite dilapidated, as I'm sure most of the members here know. And so it was not, because it was not in good repair and it was going to fall on its own, it was a safety issue, we had to remove the sign. The park board, because they haven't met, we have not replaced the sign. But I have assured his family member that contacted me directly that we would replace the sign, that it was in fact Pritz Park.
Yes.
With Ali's Park being located within Pritz Park. It is, it has not, and nor will it be completely renamed outside of the Pritz family who did donate the property to the town. Beyond that, if you'd like to contact me directly, Jocelyn, to avoid contact with your office, please feel free.
I enjoy his company, to be honest with you. It's just, he wants his props. That's it. For lack of a better word, he wants props to have a sign up there. We've been talking about this for three years. We've been kind of putting it on the park department, which I think is important, but.
It is, it is a park board responsibility. And, you know, again, due to all the COVID restrictions, I know the park board has not met, but it's time to get back in the swing. So I will schedule that within the next ten, two weeks. And I think I have the list of all the park board members still on the prior list you sent out over this year, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so that should be easy to do. I will, I will. Okay. Moving on, our building inspector's not here tonight. Josh, did he send you a report at all? Okay. Anything from planning and zoning?
Nope.
Our town marshal is here for his report. Hello, Steve.
Hello, Eric. I want to digress back to the communication that was received about, from the anonymous resident. We've actually started targeting right now. Today, I assigned some specific violations to go address, and we're going to start addressing them one by one. This is the time of year that we do it. So I'm not surprised that, that somebody brought it up. So it is something that we do. One of the garbage cans, because, you know, during the winter months, people forget the, the cold tape and backup. And so that's going to be one of the things that we target. Vehicles and junk are, is next. There really aren't a lot because we try to keep up with that over the winter because cars can break down a lot in the winter. They tend to sit. So we have to keep it up on that. But there is no doubt we're going to have to do something with this boat breaking down on Johnson Road. So we'll deal with that.
Thank you.
So, and I can appreciate that person's comments. But, you know, we can't tell people how to live either.
Correct.
And that's, that's unfortunate. Audio cameras, they're all, they're all in place. We got our refresh. All four of us have them, so we're good to go there. Thank you very much. Speaking of Wally Prince, he was in, what was it, two weeks ago? And I've mentioned a couple of things, but the one is the ditches by Evergreen Plaza. I know historically, it's been the street department's responsibility to go and clean these ditches and keep them clean. But we've had a few people in recently with these easement issues, whether it's utility or drainage. And we've pretty much instructed them that it's their responsibility to keep these ditches and these easements clean. It's their property. It's simply an easement. They're still responsible for cleanup. Having said that, I know it's beacon. I know it's not 100% accurate. However, it's got to be within a few feet. Those teams concerned about the ditches behind Evergreen Furniture, which are extremely overgrown. But if that's his property, of which it does show that it could be within his lines and there's an easement there, whose responsibility is it to clean that? And that's why I was hoping Mr. Willoughby would be here. But I, I think that's something that, you know, has to be decided.
Do you mean like overgrown with brush? Is that what you're saying? Who should be cleaning the brushside holes?
So some of that has to be left because it actually improves the drainage. To remove all of that.
But this is.
To clean along, along this, are you talking in the actual ditch itself?
Yeah, the base where the water actually flows. Because it, it really gets blocked in through there. You know, you get, you get items of debris in there. They stay in there. You have to keep it somewhat clean.
I would defer to Mr. Willoughby on this one because I know what my opinion would be, but I don't want to.
Right. But, you know, we have to bring it up because the judge says, he comes in, he wants answers, and I get it.
So we will contact Chris for that answer.
Okay. That's all I have.
That's all. Well, thank you.
You guys have anything for me? That's one thing. As always, we appreciate your support. Keep up the good work, Marshall. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Sort of what Steve was talking about, would the house group be able to make a look at what vegetation is supposed to be allowed for a ditch?
Well, the fridmities, which are, you know, the cattails and those sort of things, they're not supposed to be, they're, they're not indigenous to this area. But they also support wildlife, you know, smaller animals, stuff that, you know, keeps, keeps them with habitat. So I've seen plenty of places that got cleaned out and the animal rights group shows up and, and they took away their habitat, you know. So you let it grow back up. Doesn't take long to grow back up. But, you know, the volume of the ditch of like two, you can imagine thousands of those cattails in there. They do take up a lot of room.
Well, the cattails are pretty heavy Risky. From Risky, this Risky east, behind that section, it's pretty, yes. That's, that I know is pretty, really dense with cattails.
Yeah.
You get down by Frosty Boy and keep going east, not so much.
When you get behind the, the furniture, it's pretty thick.
Over, is that back there?
It's pretty thick.
And you get a bunch of junk that falls back in that ditch.
Well, and that's part of the problem. And, you know, it's incidental, but it's still in there. Who's responsible for going in there cleaning?
Well, and, and what I was going to say was, and this is where we need to refer Mr. Willoughby, is, is part of the drainage infrastructure of the town? And is the town, we're responsible for maintaining that infrastructure, right? Right?
I'm going to, yes, but I'm going to defer to Mr. Willoughby on that.
That's why I would like, but to me, that's where the responsibility lies, is to maintain the infrastructure of the town.
Yes and no. Because you can't, if we can't control the debris that falls in there, if it's, if it's as a result of debris being left unattended and improperly disposed of in a certain location, and then it starts to quag the ditch over time, is that really the town's responsibility or is that the property owners who created that problem?
The reason why we have the easement is so we can maintain the ditch.
I'll defer to Mr. Willoughby on this one. Any other questions or comments regarding that? We're going to move on in the interest of time.
Would you want us to take a look?
If you would.
Chris is...
If you would, we'll do both.
Okay.
If you would.
Sure.
Thank you, and that way you'll know what's there in the ditch, what's present, all the way along Evergreen Plaza, both east and west of Frosty Boy. So, to the right and left of Frosty Boy.
Just so I can keep, so I'm in the loop, you're gonna start at risky and go all the way down to the wood line?
Yes, sir.
And up towards 20?
Yes.
You could, if you, if you, get it out, if you're confused, you can hit me up, and I'll, I'll show you what I'm talking about.
Okay.
And then if you would, if you would like to talk to Chris about that, since you are gonna be working at House potentially as well, that would be great. Thank you. Moving on, our street department commissioner was not able to be here this evening, however, he did send a report. He is continuing with leaf pickup for the town for spring cleaning. There are two more pickups left, so if you don't have your leaves out already, please get your leaves out, and remember to remove any sticks or other debris from the leaves. He also wanted to make sure that, that they were still okay to get an estimate on the repairs and the refreshing of dump truck number 34 from Linco. I believe that we had that already in the budget, so that should be good to go. Things that he had planned to have done were having the frame repainted, having the steps repainted, installing the trailer brake, and repair of any other issues that might require attention. And lastly, he is working with Hausner Associates on marking the roads for repairs, so...
Question on that, 2813 Greenwood, those cones have been up approximately two to three weeks now, and my cross-street neighbor, let's just say, isn't, isn't too happy about the situation. I know last month, Mr. Z talked about, they were looking at that, that hole right there, where, where it keeps breaking up, is maybe there's some water, that it may have more of a problem than, than normal, and that's why the cones were put out there, but like I said, that's been two or three weeks now, and I don't know what's, what's going on. It doesn't seem like it's been patched, it hasn't been filled.
Was that one of the holes Joe reported, that the town went ahead and cold patched it?
Yes.
Last meeting? So, even with the cold patch, it's still, it's still sinking?
Yeah, and the cones are still out there. So, there's, there's the front part of it, that I think is still somewhat stable, but there's the backside of it, that's, that's really decelerating. They were thinking that there was some, maybe some moisture down in there that, that wasn't allowed with the patch to take, and they were gonna do some, for some further examination of it, but...
Isn't that right at their driveway?
Yes, at the end of the driveway.
I think that might have something to do with it, too, since it's kind of, I think it's being undermined, because, well, not only that, but...
What's that addressing, 2813? And there's three, three orange cones still out.
2813 Woods?
Greenwood.
Greenwood, yep, Greenwood.
You can't miss the orange cones.
That's why they're orange.
That's right. It's surprising they're still there, because last year, they kept getting, they kept getting run over and drug down the road, and it wasn't me.
We'll take a look at it.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
I don't know if that's in one of the seven locations with CCMS stuff.
I believe it is.
I believe it is, it's one of the, the patching locations.
Yes, if it's in one of those zones, I think we can handle it there.
Okay, so if you'll check into that.
Figure out what's wrong.
Right, correct.
Thank you. Yeah, we'll just dig it up and replace it.
Okay, all right, anything else?
Should be very appreciative.
What do you see?
I have a meeting on the 20th for both the finance committee at 8:00 AM and the regular commission at 9:00.
Okay. Moving on to old business, we have the refuse account at 2811 East Michigan Boulevard. Hello, Mary. Who had reintroduced herself to the crowd?
Yes, my name is Mary Blatchley, and I am the owner of the property located at 2811 East Michigan Boulevard. We have been dating this for, for some time, and there was some confusion as far as payments that were made. When I was here last time, I believe that the statement was that the last payment was in 2013. Since that time, I've done quite a bit of going back and filing all my records, and I find out that I had made the payments in 2014, that was paid in three installments, it was $100, $100, and $200. I had also made a payment, got, okay, I had also made a payment January 16th of 2015, check number 2174, in the amount of $458.30. I had made a payment January the 19th, 2016, in check number 2214, in the amount of $400. I had made a check, a payment on January 16th of 2017, check number 2259, in the amount of $400.
Could you read through this, so?
I'm sorry, I'm trying to read my little...
Okay, I'm sorry. Because I have your account right here, if you want to hand that over to me, and I can check them off as I go?
Yeah, certainly, and then I went all the way back to 12, I think I even got the math, 2011.
And I think it was 17, actually, that your account balance was at zero.
Right, because I didn't make 17.
Exactly.
So, and last time, the comment was, I hadn't made it since 2013, and, and so I'm not sure where that came.
I think they, they may have just misspoke.
Yeah, so, I did all that data, okay. Anyway, I found out is, I'm not only paying, I, I've been paying $400 instead of $200. So, all those years when I wasn't using it or getting any service, I was paying...
You've got two buildings, that's what's on the account, that you were paying for two buildings, but way back in 2011, Ria had, you had spoke with Ria, and you guys worked that out. There's some comments on the database of our utility system that indicate that you spoke to her.
Okay.
Okay, so that's, that cleared up, and was cleared up years ago.
Okay, that's fine, I guess you spoke to her, that's fine, yeah. So, so, I understand your position as far as, you know, the other, the other residents in that, so I guess what my offer to you is, for 18, 19, 20, and 21, I'd like to pay the $200 per year, which is $800, plus a late fee of $80.
Josh Lane, what would the late fee typically be on that?
I went all the way back to 2017, the last date that she had a zero account balance. Unfortunately, there's liens on the property, so every time the town puts a lien on a property, we don't collect any revenue on that, it goes straight to the assessor, to the recorder, to record it. It used to be $25 for a lien, $25 for a lien release, then it, it's gone up to 30, now it's $35 for a lien, and then $35 for a lien release. And what we do is, we, we put that on the account upfront. So, if we go all the way back to 2017, there are $839.21 in penalties, just strict penalties, not lien release or lien charges, because we're gonna need to spend that money when we release the liens.
How many liens are there?
I think there's four liens on the property.
So, that'd be for the four years. Is that what you're saying, that they would put a lien on each year?
Each year, and it's in every year's. Yeah, so like, let's see, and I'm pretty sure you kept it current since, or you've been making payments in these most recent years.
22 and 23.
Correct, yes, yeah, and she has, and that's when I, like I said before, once again, you didn't receive it.
Right.
Because the, the figure we were given was substantially higher than...
Yeah, the 235049.
That's part of her, I just gave you an amount for refuse, for her penalties, just penalties, because last month, she came to you and...
So, the total is 23?
The total, total, total on the account is $3,049.21.
Okay, see, I didn't receive that, that amount, okay? I had only to that amount.
In 2022, you have, it's 8% of the unpaid balance. Now, years ago, prior to 2017, it was 10% of the unpaid balance, and then it would be 10% of the unpaid balance on top of any late fees, and so we keep accruing that 10%. In 2017, council passed a new ordinance, which allows for only 8%, strict 8%.
Which is a statutory, which is lien interest, pursuant to statute, yes.
And that's probably why we changed it, when we put it in place.
Yeah, because the 10% would be bulked, statutory amount.
But then in 2022, there was another lien put on the property, which was another $50, and then in...
I'm sorry, I thought you said it was $25.
And after $35.
No, she said it's increased incremental.
This is the money that the town receives, is what the recorder charged.
No, I understand, I understand, yeah, but I thought you said that the, to record a lien was $35.
In 2022, it was $25.
Okay.
In 2023, it's $35 per item, so the lien is $35, and the lien release is $35, so it's 70 now, which is what you were charged in 2023, when, because you keep running an accrued, you keep running a balance, so every year, we put a lien on the property since 2017.
Okay, but there has been no release, correct?
No release.
Okay.
Because the balance is still $3,049.
Okay, and you have $3,049 even, or, because I have not received...
$3,049.21.
Okay, because the last date in my head was $2,758.
$2,978.53 was what your bill went out for January 1st, 2023.
And then I paid on that.
You did pay on that, but again, you got hit with another, another penalty when it was time to put penalties on for the year, because there's a balance on the account. So, the system automatically generates that 8%, which gave you another penalty of $220.68.
Okay, so I have a bill of $2,978, I paid $200, and now, and the bill went up to $3,000.
Then it went down to $2758.53, and then in March, when the refuse penalties go on, because everything has to be paid, and because you carry a balance, the system automatically generates the...
Okay, I understand, I've been here, I've been here before, March, okay?
Right, but that doesn't stop our system from accumulating those other charges and fees.
Okay.
Unfortunately.
Okay, so once again, what I'm asking for is to pay, you know, the four years at $200 per year.
The only problem I have with that is, again, it sets a precedent, so if we do it for you, then we have to do the same thing for everybody.
I don't know that you have other people in this situation.
We do have other people in this situation, that are, are not coming forward and asking for the same, for the same consideration. And I, I don't know that we're gonna name properties, but I'm sure that we have other people in some other situations. So, I, I don't know how the rest of the board feels, I, I personally, I, I, you know, I'm sorry, but I can't.
But it keeps going up, like I said, I've been trying to get it off, and I pay, and it goes higher instead of lower.
Because you're carrying a significant balance, and the amount you're paying is the current amount that's due, not any portion of that prior balance. And so, much like any other bill that would accrue interest, we'll use a credit card for a, a very poor example of it, but you would accrue, if you had a $1,000 balance and you only paid the minimum payment, you're still going to accrue that interest, and accrue that interest, and it takes you longer to pay off. I understand you'd like to, to make the, the settlement with the town, but...
Right.
We've been trying to track this, this down for how many years now, and we've been having a continuous issue, so...
Okay, I, I'm not sure what you mean.
The property bills have been going, the, the bills for this property should be going to your address on Overhill, if I'm correct?
Yes.
And I'm not sure, you know, where they, you're claiming that you haven't gotten them?
No, I'm not claiming I haven't received them, I'm claiming I haven't had any service.
Okay, at one point, I thought you said that you hadn't received bills.
I, I don't know, I have, I, I went back, like I did, and it said and didn't, all my research and that, and...
At, at any rate, at the end of the day, we still have employees trying to, to manage this, who, you know, that cost our town money, and we're still having to, to put forth the service. And we also have other residences in town that, that have been vacant, that they're still responsible for that same fee. I, I can't write that off for you, I'm sorry.
But you understand that I've been paying for, everybody else is paying too.
We appreciate that.
I've been paying 400.
And that was prior to 2017, from what Josh Lane is saying, and that's already been resolved.
No, that was 2017, no, that wasn't resolved, that was 17, 18, 19, and 20, it was 400, not two.
But again, her, her prior assistant who was here discussed that matter with you, and that's, my, my understanding is that was, the issue was resolved already, so that's not included in your current balance?
Yes, it was, was not.
Because your, your zero balance, your last zero balance was 2017, correct?
Yes.
You're, you in agreement with that?
Yes.
Okay, so since that time, and we're talking seven years, how many of those...
Talking four years.
About six years for this year.
18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, because it's 2023 now. But those haven't paid.
22 and 23.
But it applies back to your oldest bill, it doesn't apply to your current, if, if I'm correct, Josh Lane.
Mm-hmm, correct.
So, that, the $200 you paid goes back to your first unpaid bill, so that it can try to reduce...
Which would have been 2018.
Right.
So, even though I paid my bill on time, I'm still getting a penalty for not paying my bill on time?
From having the prior unpaid balances.
For 18, 19, 20, and 21.
For those four, yes. Well, actually, 22 would be included, even though it was paid, it went back to 18.
Yeah, she paid the, that year's bill in 22, but it, right.
But it went back to the beginning of 2018.
Right.
So, you're still, you still have late fees that, that were accrued there, and a balance that, that carried over into 2019, 2020.
Well, I understand what you're saying, okay, but I, I don't, I don't see the equity in me paying my bill on time, and then being charged late fees on paying that bill on time.
But there are four years that you didn't pay the bill, that's, that's where the late fees are coming from.
Well, okay, and here again, I'm asking for forgiveness of those bills, forgiveness of the late fee, not forgiveness of the bills, I'm sorry, I'm asking that I can pay the $200, which is a normal bill, for those four, for those four years, plus the late fee of $80.
And again, I understand that, I'll let the council voice their own opinion on this, but I'm, I'm not in favor of doing that, because we have not done that for any other resident of this town that would be in a similar situation. And again, if we do it for you, then we've got to do it for everybody, and, and all of these things cost our town money to track these things. There's still an expense involved on our end to, to move through the process.
This, this is our only teeth for people who don't pay their bill.
Okay, but you, a year ago, that bill was forgiven.
That bill was forgiven, I don't remember having forgiven a bill.
What? I take you back to, maybe I'm wrong in my date.
Originally granted a reduction, but had to pay 30% collection fee.
Okay, and, and the date that was, what, sir?
That was May of '22.
Right.
Okay.
No, March, March of '22, yeah, March, March of '22.
So, it's been, and then in May of '22, you rescinded that.
Right.
Right, because the property was not in compliance with our codes, if I remember correctly.
Right.
Which is separate from...
And then has now since been brought up to code.
Okay, so it's been over a year, hope, then it...
And again, I'll, I'll let the town voice their, or the other council members voice their own opinions, I am not in favor.
Well, I guess my question would be, is, why are we having a, you know, a continuous occurring balance? Is it, is it possible to pay the $3,049.21 and just make this go away?
That's going to take me, my, I have a tenant there, that would be two months rent, over two months rent. Plus, of course, my utilities and all that, and taxes, I, I just got my taxes, of course, we all did, you know.
Oh, I did, I had to pay.
You didn't?
I had to pay.
Well, yeah.
We got our tax bills.
All our tax bills, yeah.
Sure, yeah, so like, I said, that'd be two months, over two months, rent. Which is the only money, you know, obviously, from your...
Again, I, I understand, but...
Okay.
I, I don't, we don't have other mortgage companies that have vacant homes that have been, you know, repossessed or foreclosed upon, that are asking for the same thing. We don't have other, other residents who have vacant homes, for whatever reason it might be, whether they're renting those homes, or whatever it might be, the case, I...
Well, I understand your position, like I say, you know, it's like, I'm paying, and I'm not getting anywhere, because then you put more, more penalties, more interest on top of it. I'm, I'm very surprised that it went up from the 27 to 3,000.
If we went back to the 27, would you be satisfied with that?
Since it has taken us a year.
I would ask that I be allowed to pay 200 a year. I would ask that I be allowed to pay $200 a year instead of $400.
$200 a year is what our regular fee is.
That's correct.
But we're asking you to catch up on the fees that are in arrears.
Right, and that's why I'm saying my arrears include $400 a year instead of $200.
I guess I'm not, so are you saying you would only pay the extra $200 on top of your normal fee?
No, I have been charged $400 a year.
I'm not understanding the second building part.
I don't either.
Why were you charged for years?
Yeah, I have no.
$400. We don't have a second building. It's not split in half.
No.
Was there a second property?
Two separate businesses that were in there.
No.
Do you have a property on Johnson Road?
No, on 2811 Hill, Michigan Boulevard.
No, I thought you had one on Johnson.
Oh, no.
I'm sorry.
Oh, no, that is Mary Fox. That's a different Mary Fox.
Oh.
There's Mary Fox.
So you're not paying that off.
Yes, it's two Mary Foxes, yes, right, yeah.
I know that.
Yeah.
So.
So, you know, like I said, in going back, in going back, and I think I have that on the sheet where I showed that I've been paying the $400.
How many years did she pay the $400?
Prior to me, yeah.
How many years did she pay the?
I don't know. So do you show that?
Yeah.
Can we count it up?
What is her bill now? Is it 200 or 220?
220.
220, yeah.
Per year. And it's been that for several years because we locked the price with the refuse removal company.
Eight years.
So how was that resolved with Ria and?
It was even, I don't even know that Ria was here. It's something that's been in there since January 2010. I'm not sure Ria was handling the refuse.
So we just took the 400 and?
Well, there's a note in there that says two buildings. That's why I'm asking for, maybe there was two separate tenants, maybe they had two garbage services at one time because you were running your attorney's office and then also another business.
There was another business.
And that's probably why it got set up that way.
If there's two businesses, I can understand that.
Because that's exactly, that's what we, the apartment buildings across the run route or red line.
So.
So if there was two businesses there, then it's a legit double charge.
Right.
Because you would have each needed a cart.
Okay. So, but there hasn't been two business since 2013, or 2014.
So I want to look just at 2017 forward from where you had that zero balance in 2017 because that's what this fee is from.
Right.
What happened before, happened before. I can't go back and fix that. And I'm not even sure, you know, I'm not sure what happened with 2018, 19, 20, and 21. 22 and 23 were paid, correct?
Yes.
So if we go back to where we were last year when we started talking about this at first, what was that balance at that time?
In January 2023, it was $2,978. Then she made a, she did make a payment for 220. So it was $2,758.53.
In March, March of 20, uh, 22, excuse me, March of 22, yeah, two months, March of 22. $2,359, which is the amount we've been talking about.
Yes, right. This is where my head's at with this. I would be, since it's taken us a year, if she can pay the $2,359.49 and call it good. Because it has taken us a year.
It absolutely has. What was that figure of income?
$2,000, Josh Lane, Josh Lane, it's okay. $2,359.49.
The collection agency, is that a problem?
Do we know, we do not, just, and Chris was aware of this, if they don't collect, we don't.
Then we owe them nothing, right.
Correct. And like I said, I am.
Because that wasn't shared, I don't think.
They did try, but they were sending it to your 2011 special bill card. I'm not sure how many times they attempted, but they did and ceased.
Well, I had a forwarding address for over a year, you know.
And so that should have forwarded to you, but whatever happened there.
But that's where I am with this. Since it's taken us a year, the original balance we were told was $2,359.49. If you can pay that, we'll call it good and we'll start from the zero balance.
I would agree with that.
Well, that's better than $3,000.
I will make that, I will make that motion.
Okay, we need a second.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
So we'll settle there and that we were back to where we were when we first started discussing this. And we can call it even and if you can get that, then we can go to a zero balance and start anew for next year. Okay? Good?
You happy with that?
No, I'm not happy.
But we'll call this back and we're just closed.
All right. Thank you very much. Glad we had some resolution there for you. Moving on, we have the town home over model approval of its design. So those of you who are on the committee for this project, if you'd like to talk a little bit about it.
I mean, I've looked at it. It's all ADA compliant. I know you looked at it too. You had the questions about the door opener button, but since if we go with the
If you have that down to Sharon?
We're sharing. We'd like to look at this.
And Justin, you have your own.
Here's the original over here. So the windows were changed and the HVAC was changed to not use the existing ductwork underneath the pad so it'll go overhead. Everything else is good.
Did he give us an estimate on the cost?
There was an estimate. I know I saw one, but I don't see it on here now. It was like.
What's the ballpark?
It was like $160,000, $170,000, I think. I think it was.
Wow, that sounds, that lady could go on.
Right, that sounds a little easier than that.
And so.
I saw.
We've got a fireproof file room. We've got an office. Josh Lane, this is bigger than your current office, correct?
Uh, not very much.
But then it gives you more storage in the back.
We have more storage up here in a more orderly fashion.
Okay. Gives you a bathroom that has no public access, which is nice. And no bathroom for the public.
Yes, that's ADA compliant, yes.
What was the deal with the doors, with the button?
Uh, one, the fact that, you know, when you go to some public places where they have a button you push and the door opens automatically. That's not included in these plans. I'm sure if we wanted to, we could have that added.
It would be nice to have that feature.
We could have that added. If not, then as long as the door only requires five pounds of pulling force to open, then it's, the door's.
Yeah, but that's often, if somebody's in a chair, um, trying and.
I would still recommend having the push button.
I would too.
Absolutely. I can't, I can't see that added a whole lot of. Or if it's windy, we don't want it to.
Yeah, and that's something that we could talk with the contractor after, or put an addendum in to the bid saying that we would like to have this added.
That's all, can I just?
It's not, it's not a deal breaker for sending this downstate for approval.
And the HVC is okay, the ductwork?
Yep.
We're not going to have lube layers.
Nope, no, because it's.
They're going to cap the ductwork probably nine of it.
Is it going to be in the ground on this side?
Everything should be overhead.
That'd be overhead.
So no.
I'm not asking.
Yep, it'll be overhead.
I'm not a construction person, so to be, this doesn't, I don't know what I'm looking for, so I leave it up to you guys.
It's on, it should be on the last page.
That last one where it says all the.
Yep.
That's where you're. So you've got existing ducts to be reused.
That's the return. If you see existing return ducts, so that's the cold air return, yes.
So that's fine, but no.
So the other concern the other night was the windows.
Yes, and actually that's changed.
Okay.
Yes, the window type, middle grade aluminum case in window or equal.
Okay.
Y'all were happy. Let's give them, let's give.
I will move to approve these trends as presented and send them downstate for approval.
Second? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, I do have the design discussion tonight as well.
Wonderful. I was going to ask.
When this question was begun, probably begins, the discussion on where you're going to be working?
I have to come by, I have to, I'm ready.
Physically?
There has been some.
There's been some discussion. I, there's, one thing that was mentioned was going home to use the restroom. I would not do that.
I think that's kind of a little bit of a haul and then we've got Penny who does not go as far as close as you.
And there was some discussion about an RV. I think that would be a really difficult haul with our files and paperwork, the computers and printers and everything else we need to take care of our residents. And I don't know. There was some discussion of utilizing his garage again, but then the question was whether or not we could utilize his restroom because of that.
So when we send this out for bid, if we could have whoever the contractor is potentially put in the bid for them to pull, have you seen the large trailers that they have?
Yeah, I think that's what she talked about with it.
Not RV, no, these are like large.
Trailer.
Yeah, like office trailers. We could put that, put that in the bid. That way you can work out of that.
Yeah.
Depending on who the contractor is too, he might be able to do it in stages.
Then that would be ideal.
That's, that would be definitely ideal if it's not too loud.
We couldn't do it because we were so small and, you know, compact and spread out. So there may be a good possibility that they could do most of that over there or most of this here and work over there.
This section first so that Josh Lane and Penny could move here.
Right, as long as it's not too loud to conduct business, you know, talk over.
It will be loud.
Things like that.
It will be loud, but that would allow for minimum or minimal disruption with your files and computer.
And if we were to put in the bid that we just use a trailer, we'd have to worry about any of that throughout the entire course of the construction.
Depending on the cost of the trailer.
And depending on what season you get.
Right, well, those are heated and cooled both and I think someone would have plumbing also. So you could literally have just a temporary office space. That's what I'm saying. I think it would be best to have that put into a bid when we do send this offer bid. I can't see it being too much more costly to do that. I really can't.
The best part would be part of that trailer, uh, our crew that takes care of us in town here. Uh, being an, they would, yeah, they would just, they're set up to come in and be, you have a court with tanks sitting outside. It's above ground, all that stuff. I just.
Once a week emptied out, because you're not going to, you, I'm sure you're not going to use it all that often.
It's just a, it's a trailer.
It would be a public restroom. It would just be for the office use.
Right. Well, we can certainly discuss that more when.
I mean, do you decide where our meetings are, how long the project's going to take?
Yeah, when would we get the, when would we get the total price on this? So it goes downstate for.
Approval and then we will send it out to bid after that.
Probably still at least six months off from the start.
Okay, that was my next question. When is this going to start and roughly how long is this going to take from start to finish? Does anybody know?
No, I was just going to say the same thing. It depends on who bids the project and how quickly they can move.
So the next step, state has to approve it.
Right.
Has to be sent through it. We know that takes a week or so. Then once they approve it, comes back to us, says, okay, you got it. We're assuming we're get approved. And then we're.
Then we send it out for a skilled bid.
Right.
I don't think we're six months out. I think we're maybe two, three tops.
Yeah, I can't remember how long the bid, the.
It depends on how busy the contractors are.
Sure. Thirty days essentially with summer coming now.
You've got some. Especially the larger companies are already.
Right.
Yeah, they're booked.
Yeah.
Okay, so we've got the motion, the second approval. It's been approved to send down to state, so we'll start there. And once we get that approval back from the state, then we can send them out to bid. So we're moving forward. It's exciting.
See, there's a lot of people for public comment tonight.
It's exciting for our friends.
Absolutely. Seeing that we have no public available for comment this evening, we'll move on from that. Anything from the clerk's office? Okay.
I have a few things since I wasn't here last month. I wanted some clarification on it. First off was the ARP fund, which I know I sent you guys a text, but I want our public to know on camera that this was a decision you guys made to put the extra 10% raise for the police into the ARP funds. So that's an additional $14,300 and then plus taxes on for employees with their 10% raise. That is coming out of the ARP fund.
Okay.
So that's, I saw you guys on camera like the wheels were turning.
Yeah.
Yes, and that is reflected on the salary.
Thank you for clarifying.
Second thing is, I know there was some discussion on the refuse contract. You were correct. It is expiring next year. So next year.
Moving to the offer bid.
Um, obviously we want to start talking about specifications and what we want and negotiating and getting our bids up.
It expires in January 2024?
It expires December 31st, 2024.
December 31st, 2024, okay.
I actually.
So 2025 is when?
Yes, when the new contract would start. I was actually, I'd start discussing that in June.
We really should because we know it's before.
August was a tight squeeze.
Yes. And then my third thing was just some clarification on the CIT training. I know that you guys wanted to pay the two days that you were off.
The two vacation days that.
Yeah, the two vacation days, sorry to go over that.
Correct, so, so, but the two days would be 24 and a half hours, but you guys agreed, you guys approved to pay for 40.
So the entire training, I think, was longer than two days.
It was a week.
It's a full week, it's a full 40-hour training.
Right, and he, he gets paid his salary.
Right.
His base salary. His base salary is based off 85.75 hours every two weeks.
I don't get paid for Monday, Tuesday, Friday.
No, because those are your days off.
Right, and then Wednesday, Thursday, I was on vacation, so I got paid to attend class on my vacation time.
Okay, but you guys approved for two days that you took, that were your off days. They were your off days that you went to the training. So that's not included in your base pay. So two days, is it 40 hours or is it 24 and a half hours at $55 an hour?
So we're being reimbursed by the county at $55 an hour for 40 hours.
Right, but remember, he's getting his base salary pay already. I'm just clarifying and I want to make sure you guys understand. If you guys do understand, then tell me and we'll kind of check for his base pay plus the 40 hours. Because if you take 85.75 hours and you divide that by the two weeks, that's 42 and a half.
You're looking at it too deep. You're, unfortunately, you're way off base.
I'm not. It actually works out to be double time. Sorry.
Monday, Tuesday, Friday are the days. I don't get paid for those days. I was in class those days. Tuesday, Wednesday, I took his vacation days. That's my time.
Right.
I was in class for those two days as well. That's 40 hours for the week.
But you get a salary.
You're missing the point still.
Okay. He's getting a pay, a salary of $3,000 and some change.
I'm not getting a salary for days I'm off. And that's what I'm, that's what I'm trying to explain to you.
Were you off the whole week?
Yes.
But you're still getting your paycheck.
Oh, my Lord.
He's still getting the paycheck.
I understand what you're saying.
Because I'm entitled to my paycheck.
Correct, but then if we pay you an additional 40 hours at $55 an hour, we're going way above. Correct, but then if we pay you an additional forty hours at fifty-five dollars an hour, we're going way above. We're going, we're doing too much, but it's up to you guys, so.
Are we gonna have to adjust the salary ordinance to do that again?
Well, that's the next question, is where are you gonna take that from?
So that would be taken from the reimbursement that we're getting from the county.
That we haven't received, that won't go in back into, even if I receive a check now, it's not in our budgets right now, so we have to, we have to adjust for that.
Understood.
So I was just looking for clarification because I wasn't here, otherwise I would have asked questions. And also, when, when do you want to pay that out?
Counselor.
So I'm confused, I thought you were paid hourly.
No.
Salary.
You have, you are salaried.
But the county figured out to be an hourly amount, but they were reimbursing every, um, every entity that attended, so every police department that sends an officer.
Right, I understand that.
Regardless of their rank or their position, they'll figure out their hourly number and reimburse their entity for that amount.
So you have not been paid anything yet, Marshall? You have not been paid anything for that, that CIT training?
No.
Okay, when do we expect to be reimbursed for the forty hours at fifty-five dollars an hour? Josh Lane, do you have any idea?
I don't know.
Thirty, sixty days.
Okay.
It's been thirty days.
Let me throw this out there, instead of us having to rearrange everything, would it be possible for you to wait the thirty to sixty days until we receive the reimbursement and have your decision?
That was, yes, that's what you had said.
So I guess, but I, and maybe I'm thinking too hard about this too, so you've got your regular salary that you were paid, even though you were, took your vacation days that week. And then CIT is paying us for you to attend that training, technically. So we're actually being paid as a town for him to receive that, to attend that training, so technically the money that he received for that training in my mind should go back to Steve. So that's where that other forty hours at fifty-five dollars an hour, it's not really a reimbursement, it's a cost that the county is giving to us.
So, just so we're clear, it is your base pay.
It does look like a second paycheck, but they're sending us that money because he attended that training.
On my time.
Right, you could have went fishing for those five days.
Or camping.
Yes.
For a full forty hours, not the two days, not the twenty-four.
It's the full forty hours that he would be paid.
You were off Monday, Wednesday, Monday, Tuesday, Friday, and then you took two vacation days, but five vacation days, correct?
Okay.
Because his vacation times are already included in his base pay.
It's my time though, so you have to compensate.
No, I understand, I understand.
I think you do, but that's what I'm trying to say.
But I think you understand my, my.
So I understand, yeah.
Yeah, so we understand what you're saying, but they're sending us the second check for his, his time that he spent there. And so that money, because that came out of a special fund, not from the county, it was from a totally different, you know, thing, or.
Drug-free partnership, so it's all.
Okay, thank you, the organization was, and so that money actually should go back to him. So the same thing will happen whenever our other officers attended to CIT training as well.
Okay, so we're giving him his base pay.
Right, and when that other money comes in, when the payment comes in.
Plus the twenty-two hundred dollars, so he's gonna have the whole take home on that, it's not being reimbursed into the fund that we paid him already for.
Because it almost seems like a double dip, honestly.
I understand what you're saying as well, but it's two separate payments, so we were going to pay him anyway, even.
I understand that.
He did already pay.
Right.
We did already.
Drug-free partnership pays, pays the officers to go to the training.
I understand.
And we had our other officers.
I understand that.
Because if I were hourly, I would get time and a half for a contest.
See, and that's why. Wouldn't you want to be paid for?
I wouldn't take my vacation, they wouldn't use my vacation, I'm actually working very well.
But he wasn't.
Yeah. He could have done other things with those two vacation days that go to training.
See, I'm also paid hourly though.
Is it two days or is it forty hours?
The training is forty hours, so it covered not only, the time span that he was there was a full five days. So he took his two vacation days anyway, but his three off days were also spent there. So it'd be like if you were in the office.
But he's taking his paycheck.
Right, but if you were in the office.
Base salary, which includes his vacation pay, okay.
I understand.
Okay, as long as you understand, I just want to make sure that we're not over, that we're not doubling things. That's all, okay.
No, I understand, but I do understand that you need to wait until that payment comes into the town.
Yeah, that was, that was the original agreement.
I'm still not, I'm not, I'm not good with it, honestly.
Okay.
I don't understand, I, because like I said, you get a salary, you're not hourly. And I understand those were your days off, and I honestly believe that that money that the county would be giving us will be to put back into our fund because you were not here present, even though you get a salary, you were not here present working. So, that, I think that money, the reimbursement would be for if someone were actually be here working, we paid them to be at the training, and that's where the reimbursement would come in.
If, if I, if I'm off, let's not use me as an example, let me use somebody that's hourly. If they're off Monday, Tuesday, Friday, they are going to get paid for their time on that Monday, Tuesday, Friday.
And that's where the difference is.
And they take their vacation days, those are their days to take.
That's where the difference lies though, is between the hourly and the salary.
Correct, because I don't get overtime.
Right.
And this isn't considered quote-unquote overtime, this is extra time because it's training.
This, to me, actually sounds like it would be a double dip situation, honestly.
For the two days.
Right, that he took as vacation days.
That's right.
Right.
I believe Mr. Willoughby agreed to though, that it was rightful.
I'm just saying.
I see both sides.
I agree too.
I'm not sure the attorney understands the payroll system, again, this was meant to bring up, just to clarify, to make sure that we're, that, first of all, I had questions because I wasn't here. But I want to make sure that we're not double paying, because for me, this is a double dip.
That's what it sounds like to me too.
And it's nothing against Steve.
No, I want to be, I want to be correct with, with how we're dealing with these.
And I want to be paid for my time.
Well, I understand.
And if I take a week, and I'm off a week, I am allowed to be away from here for a week for a week. And I end up going to training, and then the town receives a check for twenty-two hundred bucks for me giving forty hours to go to training, the town's making money off of my time, that's not fair, and that's the point I'm trying to make.
But as she stated though.
I think she's twisting it.
I don't think so, I don't think so, because you're, you're salaried.
Hold on just a second, I've listened, I think she's twisting it, she keeps talking about my salary. My salary is irrelevant, it's about my time. Monday, Tuesday, Friday, yeah, my days, like Kyle said, I can go fishing on those days. Wednesday, Thursday, I took those days off.
Two days.
I'm entitled to those days, I can do anything I want on those two days.
I agree with that.
I chose to take those five days to do this training because we felt it was worth it. So now, I'm not getting paid for any of those days, but the town's gonna get the twenty-two hundred dollars, that doesn't make sense.
Technically, so technically your salary covers all five days that you, so I see both sides.
But I'm off, I don't get to, I don't get paid for my days off, that's why I keep trying to say.
So I am salaried.
You get paid for your job.
So if I take a vacation day, I still get paid for that day. If something happens and I have to take a day off, I have to take that as vacation or personal time, right? My only two days off are on the weekends. If I had to work on the weekends, then I would have to take two days off during the week before or after.
I'm not, I don't have that luxury.
Because I would have to have flex time for that.
I don't have that luxury.
Understood. So in that case, that's where I'm saying, you know, he's already taken those two vacation days, I don't feel right not paying him for those other, at least those other three days that he was in training.
All five, because those two vacation days were my days to do with what I chose.
But technically your salary covers those two days. Technically.
We're not talking, we're talking about, not technicalities.
I, I understand that, but the technicality of it is that you do get your salary.
And then the town actually makes money off of my time.
So don't we have to request that money, this county does, just, I've already given, give it to us.
It's already been requested.
Well, that's what I'm saying, so that's, that would be our error then, because we shouldn't have requested the full five, forty hours.
No, they, they pay the full forty hours.
I think it's to reimburse the times as, as in.
It's to pay for their.
Because like, I'm not saying you're going to the training and the town's gonna make money off of that, we're not looking to do that at all. The training was required or not required, it was needed, it was good training, and you, you took it while you were, you were off. I, I understand that, but you're also salaried, just like Jenny said. This is absolutely a double dip situation, because you're gonna get your regular check, and then you're gonna get another check for another forty hours on top of that.
Actually, I have a question, do you have the reimbursement request or the authorization that they gave you?
I gave you the question.
Okay, because if we could read that, I think maybe that would clarify a little bit for us, what, you know, what that wording actually is, does it say reimbursement, or does it say that the town will be provided with? What's the wording on that request?
Email that to me.
I can look, but I emailed you.
You emailed it to me? I have not seen it.
I don't.
Excuse me, go ahead.
I was just saying, I just don't want to get into a situation where we're looked at for misappropriation of funds.
Understood.
This was discussed all last month, and.
And I guess I wasn't clear last, I definitely, not guess, I was not clear last month. On the whole salary versus hourly and you getting paid for your time, I, I, that's why I wasn't clear.
So if you relate that to an hourly employee, an hourly employee, if I were an hourly employee, you would be paying the overtime for the employee out.
Yes, yes.
On top.
Salary employees don't get overtime.
Some do, if they're non-exempt.
Well, right, that's where, an hourly employee definitely gets paid overtime, a salary employee does not get overtime.
There are salaried, non-exempt employees.
Well, I understand that, but that's, this isn't the case here.
I'm sorry, I don't have it. I don't have it.
I don't see it as a double dip situation, excuse me, I, I, I don't, I do not see it like that at all. Look, Steve could have laid in bed all three of those days that he was off. He went for training, I understand his salary covers the days that he was off, the three days. But he went to training, that is, that is not something that he was just gonna do on his days off. He was sent there, they were reimbursed, he should be paid for his time, for the time that he spent for that CIT training.
I agree with that.
That's the way, that's the way I see it.
Or the forty hours.
All, all five days, because the other two days he took vacation days, but he went to training.
Okay, well, okay. I think the issue here is that nobody really understands the payroll system and the salary ordinance. So if we do that, we're gonna be running over his salary ordinance again.
This is why I asked you if it had to be adjusted, so I do understand that fully.
No, I, I know you understand that, because we've been through there, and it's nothing against you, but I want to make sure I'm doing my job right. Because right now, it looks like we are paying him his regular salary, which his vacation is already rolled into, but again, last year, we made the exception, which is why he's standing here right now asking for it, or explaining it to you in a way that it's his vacation.
I'm gonna ask that we, because this is a personnel issue, that we stop this conversation here, and we can continue this outside of this public forum, because personnel issues really should not be discussed publicly.
You guys voted on it last month, and I wanted some clarification.
We did, but that's, the clarification is that we authorize the forty hours at fifty-five dollars an hour, as we would be paid by drug-free partnership. And then if we need to adjust the salary ordinance, that we would do that accordingly.
Okay, so are we still?
So that's, that's what we authorized last month, if anyone disagrees with that at this point, you know, I'm sure that we could rescind it and take it to vote again, I don't know that everything is gonna turn out differently, but, um. It would be at the very end, it's right here. I would like to know the wording on that, that funding request.
Sure, sure, I think I sent it to you to some place.
I'll look.
It had been like a month ago today, around fifteenth.
There was no vote last month.
There was no vote last month?
Nothing, nothing, I'm seeing.
No, it's in, if you guys moved it to new business.
Okay, hold on. Okay, yes.
We did.
Yeah, it was new business.
It's a personal issue.
Looks like it.
It is a release of town, so this is what he gave me, but it just shows a breakdown of the pay.
So this is just an invoice that was sent. And your wording technically does say reimbursement there. So if it says. Yeah, I was not sent this, I don't think.
I'd like to send it to you.
Any other council members have an opinion on this?
I've stated my opinion.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say it one more time, this is the way I look at it. For three days you were off, two days were vacation days, is that correct, Marshall? Three days you were off that week, and you took two vacation days. So let's just say you were off the five days. Those five days were your time to do whatever you wanted to do on those five days off. Be it days off, vacation days, however you want to slice it, you were off five days. But you weren't able to do what you wanted to do for those five days, because you spent forty hours in training. So in my opinion, you should be reimbursed for those forty hours that you spent on your days off for that training. That's the way I see it.
I just resent it to you.
Thank you.
This is what we agreed on last month.
So the wording is reimbursement.
Right, that's what I'm reading too.
That's where it gets a little hairy, and that's where it does come in, and you're correct, the question. I still don't have an issue with paying at least the three days. But I, and I know it's a bitter pill to swallow to take two vacation days for a training. I don't agree with having to do that. However, those two days would be covered under your salary technically. Which days did you work that week, were you scheduled on Sunday or Saturday of that?
Wednesday, Thursday.
Okay, and those were the only two days that week, you would have been off.
I went down to vacations. Oh yeah, I was off Monday through Friday that week. Except Wednesday, Thursday.
Okay, and then your week typically goes which day to which day on your schedule?
I work Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and then Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. Thursday, Friday, I was in class, and then I was off Saturday, Sunday. I worked on my own days.
Which, you know, again, that's why I wouldn't have a problem paying for the off days that you were scheduled off. Forty hours. But it's still, at the end of the day. But it's still, at the end of the day. Your opinion, Mark?
We, I just say we agree.
I feel, we agreed on it last month, and so to rescind it.
Right.
I mean, what happens if something comes up, if some other training comes up? Are you going to want to do that again?
Would say that again?
I said, say some other training comes up. Are you going to want to donate 40 hours of your time again?
It won't happen again.
Oh, well, that's.
Well, and, and here's the other thing. What happens when Nick and Chris and Jason have to go through this?
They can compensate it.
For their regular work hours or for the, as an additional compensation?
Both.
Because this isn't considered. If the wording on this is saying reimbursement from, from Lear, then I don't know if he's intending that money to pay the town back for your time, for your salary for that week, or if he, his intention was for that to be an additional payment.
I don't know that he makes that determination.
But I'm sure that that funding was intended one way or another, whether it was his determination or someone else's. And I see both sides of it. But we did make the decision last month as a council.
I feel that the decision was uninformed at that time.
Let's see, are we sent to vote?
If we were to vote again, I would abstain from voting.
I think it's already been.
It's already been voted.
Well, I'm just saying, if we were to vote again, I would abstain at this time, knowing what I know now.
I guess the question is, what do you know now that you didn't know that?
Yeah, I feel that it's a double dip because you're paid as a salaried employee.
I, I see both sides. The money was already in our budget to have paid you. We're receiving an additional payment from, from the county, from drug-free partnership, which says reimbursement, but I don't know if it's intended as a reimbursement or if it's intended to cover costs that were there for the training. I don't really understand that.
I feel, well, I see, I feel it's intended to be to reimburse the town for us paying the marshal while he's there, and he's not actually serving his duty in the town at that time.
You're saying it's to cover the costs for another.
Correct.
Person to serve it. I, I don't have any answer for you on this one, Josh.
I'm sorry, but I just want to make sure that I'm doing my job correctly by informing you.
I appreciate that.
And also clarifying for myself.
I appreciate that. But we did vote on it last month, and so that's where we're at.
And my clarification was the two days or the whole, the 40 hours?
The vote that we put to.
It was for the 40 hours.
At $55 an hour.
Okay. Are we sticking with that then?
That was our, that was our motion, and everybody voted for it, if I'm correcting with my memory.
Okay, so we'll keep it that way.
So we'll keep it that way, and if we have to adjust the salary ordinance, then we'll do so at that time. Any other council comments or anything else?
Just on, we can add a slot in there. Just a subject, so it can be touched on each one, whether it's a lot or a little.
Oh, every month? Okay, sure, yeah, that's great.
You don't mind? Like just report a little bit, talk to, or email Doug Gil about it a little bit more. And he's working on parks, and that's really what we're just, that's all I know right now.
So maybe we could put that with reports? Can we put that with reports?
Yeah, sure, however you want to, where, what's the places, sort of, it's in there.
I think that would be perfect there. Thank you. Any other comments, concerns from the council? Here are none, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
A second?
Right.
All in favor?
Aye.
And reading adjourned at 8:54, I have to.
I'm still going with the big change.